Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get started with our meeting. We're gonna have Commissioner Shaw Williams lead us in our pledge. Madam Secretary, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Fowler.
Present.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Trejo.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw Williams.
Here.
Chairman Springs.
Here. Any communications from staff?
Yes, Chairman, how you doing tonight? First and foremost, we would like to congratulate Faith Smith and Brian Espinoza for their recent promotions from planning techs to assistant planners.
Congratulations.
And I know you probably remember Faith from a few years ago as an intern. And she's diligently worked her way up and is doing really well. So she'll have her first presentation a little bit later, so you'll get to see her at work. Next, staff is requesting by way of the applicant for item 6A to be continued to the October 1st meeting. And we received two in association with items 6C and 6D, the general plan amendment and the zone change. We received two letters today in opposition. And we also received response letters from the environmental consultants in response to the first letter received this afternoon. We received one about maybe an hour and a half ago. So that's the letter from Michael Si. And then there was another letter received this morning from a group called Safer. And that letter was responded to by the applicant, which you have a copy of this evening. We will also address some of those concerns in tonight's presentation. Next, we would like to announce that the Planning Division will be hosting our first General Plan Community Open House. As you know, we've recently launched a comprehensive general plan update that will be updating all elements of our general plan and adding an economic development element. This General Plan Open House will be focusing on some land use, potential land use changes, and gaining some community input in regards to some things that the community would like to see preserved, areas preserved, and/or opportunities for change. So that community meeting will be held at the Center of Hope on Saturday, September 6. The address to the Center of Hope is 9550 Crenshaw Boulevard. And I would also like to also announce that we have relaunched our website. So if you go to www dot nextlevelingelwood dot com, you will be able to get all the information related to our comprehensive general plan update and also sign up for our mailing list for any future updates and/or announcements related to opportunities to get involved and let your voice be heard. We absolutely want to hear from the community as we move forward with some of with this historic change on this historic project and undertaking. So please visit our website. And that concludes, oh, the meeting times will be from 1:00 to 5:00, I believe. There are flyers outside on our, the table outside. We've also provided flyers to the planning commissioners as well. All right, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any, is there a motion that we need to make on the moving of the item 6A?
Excuse me, Chairman, 10 to 2 is the time of the flyer of the community meeting. 10 to 2, and I said 1 to 5, so forgive me.
Do we need to make a motion on the changing of 6A? We do? Okay.
Yes.
We'll do that after. And congratulations. So at this particular point, the commissioners are asking for lunch since your salary has gone up. So you can take us to lunch, just pick a day and we'll be there. Okay, public comments regarding agenda items. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on any items on the agenda other than the public hearing may do so at this time. There's a microphone in the back, just go there and state your reasoning. Give us your name. It has to, it can't be on the public hearing, just want to let you know that. It's not on the public hearing, has to be something other than the public hearing. Not the agenda item, sir. It has to be something other than the public hearing on the agenda. Seeing, hearing, and we're gonna close that segment. I need an approval on the minutes for July 2nd, 2025.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that the approval for minutes for July 2nd, 2025. Call for any questions? Hearing, and we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Fowler.
Aye.
Commissioner Rice.
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo.
Abstain, I was not in attendance.
Commissioner Shaw Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Springs.
Aye. Okay, public hearing, 6B.
6A, Chairman.
I'm sorry, thank you. I'd like, is there a motion for us to do 6A to be postponed and move to October 1st, 2025?
Motion for item 6A to be postponed for today and moved to October 1st, 2025.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, call for any questions? Hearing, no questions, we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Fowler.
Aye.
Commissioner Rice.
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams.
Aye.
And Chairman Springs.
Aye. Madam Secretary, the 6B.
Item 6B, a public hearing to consider an application by Sohal Bashirian, representing the owner, for special use permit number 25-00016 to allow the onsite sale of distilled spirits for an existing restaurant on a C2 zone property at 1122 Centinella Avenue.
Chairman Fowler is present, and notice has been given in a time and form as required by law. Assistant Planner Faith Smith is present to give her first planning presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and the members of the commission. In July 2019, the planning staff approved a business license for Sunday gravy. The business currently operates as a restaurant with the onsite sale of beer and wine. The property is located on the north side of Centinela Avenue with commercial uses to the south, east, and west, and residential uses to the north. The applicant is seeking approval for type 47 license for the onsite sale of distilled spirits for the existing restaurant. The subject site is an existing one-story, single-tenant commercial building. The primary entrance is along the east side of the building, and a second entrance is at the rear of the building. Both entrances are accessible from the parking lot. All parking is situated onsite at the rear of the property. The proposed use does not require additional parking. The restaurant consists of an approximately 502 square foot dining area, a 303 square foot kitchen, two restrooms, and an office. The proposed hours of operations are 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Wednesday through Sunday. The restaurant specializes in Italian and American food. The menu includes pastas, salads, sandwiches, desserts, and beverages, including drink options of beer and wine. The restaurant will provide waiter service over two shifts throughout the business hours with a total of 18 employees per shift. If approved, the applicant will provide a full range of beverage options to customers. Drinks will be ordered from a menu, prepared in the kitchen, and served to the customer. The applicant will provide security cameras. Cameras will be included in plans to the satisfaction of the Planning Division. The State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control allows two onsite sale licenses for the Census tract. There are currently two onsite sale license, no PC and letter is required. The applicant currently holds an active type 41 license that allows the onsite sale of beer and wine. As conditioned, the proposed project will serve as an enhancement to its neighborhood setting and will be compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan and supports the Inglewood Municipal Code. If the Planning Commission approves the request, the applicant may be required to complete an over-the-counter application. A categorical exemption has been filed, and the project is exempt from further environmental review. No letters were received for or against this request. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions the commission might have. The applicant is also here tonight to answer the questions.
Okay, thank you, Faith, it was a very good presentation. We're gonna start off, question is for you, we're gonna start off with Commissioner Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, congratulations, Faith.
Thank you.
Just one question for you, was there a report from Inglewood Police on the crime in the area?
There.
There were, it was not a formal report from IPD, however, through our conversations with them, there were no crime reports at the subject site that currently has an existing beer and wine license.
Thank you. Commissioner Rice?
Excellent presentation, Faith, thank you so much. My questions will be for the applicant.
Commissioner Shaw Williams? Sorry.
Okay. Great job, Faith, at this time I don't have any questions, I'll reserve my questions for the applicant.
I'm going blank here real quickly here. Commissioner, Commissioner Trejo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Faith, good job, great presentation, congratulations on your promotion. I don't have any questions at this point, thank you.
I have no questions, thank you very much. If the applicant is here, you can go to the back mic and tell us about your particular project and why we should approve this.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Sohal Bashirian. Is the sound coming through all right?
Yes.
All right, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Sohal Bashirian, I'm the chef and the owner of Sunday Gravy here in Inglewood, California. My sister and I took over the space from our father, who owned Gino's Pizza in the same location. He opened it, I would say, 1970, nineteen... Five decades, we're about to have our... Okay, we were very fortunate enough to win the lottery to receive this type of license. We feel that it would allow us to continue to grow and flourish our business as we have been doing for the past six years. Never would we have imagined that we would be able to take our dad's business from the point that it was at and grow it into a business that's operating at the capacity that it's doing, employing people from our city, you know, serving people of our city and our community proudly. You know, we've been able to just sort of open doors for ourselves and the people that work for us through this space, and allowing us to be able to further enhance our business through the approval of this license would just allow us to continue to flourish within the city and even expand upon plans to be able to expand our business. You know, we have several ideas in place for sister businesses that we want to open in Inglewood. And we feel that with having this type of license and the sort of revenue and income that it would allow us to generate, it would allow us to put those plans into fruition. And so we, you know, graciously ask for your approval to allow us to do that.
Okay, thank you, sir, we're gonna open up questions for you, just hang tight. We're gonna start off with Commissioner Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for telling us about your business. It's obviously been here, a legacy business, as we call it, since you've been here a while. I wanted to commend you, I heard you say that you're hiring employees that live in the city, so thank you for that. My question has to do with security. I probably maybe needed to understand the access and egress. Is there more than one entrance to your business?
As far as an access into the business, we have one general main access right at the front of our business. There's a entrance towards the back, which is mainly used as a service entrance for our kitchen staff to be able to access the trash area. It's not generally used by the public, other than if they, if there are diners that are eating outside, that they would go around that way to enter into where the bathroom is at.
So, security-wise, about how many people do you employ for these hours? You said 11 to 10?
I would say on a, usually throughout the day, we have about 18 to 20 folks working for us. As we, we start the day, you know, at the time of business, right at 11 when we open, there's generally about 10 people. And then as the day progresses, it grows to about 18 to 20 folks, depending on the day, if it's a weekday versus a weekend.
But specifically, do you hire security personnel?
Security personnel, no, because we've never really had the need to hire security personnel. You know, we have cameras onsite, and generally, we've never really felt that there was a need for security personnel to be onsite. It's a very, you know, just fun, family, lively atmosphere, and we've, we've never felt that there was a situation that would require us to feel the need for security onsite.
So I saw the, thank you, I saw the one camera, so is that for the parking area? Is that for the entrance, what is it?
We have a camera that is set up that will, that overlooks out in the, the main area of the parking lot that oversees the entrance, the main entrance, and then cars entering in. We have a camera set up on both sides of our restaurant to cover facing one direction of the restaurant, another camera facing the other direction, and then we have one in our kitchen as well. And then there are plans, just since, you know, to have one that is also facing into our office for that reason, and we feel that we will also be installing one right at that back entrance as well, so that we can have complete 100% coverage of every square inch of that restaurant.
Okay, thank you, that's my question, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rice?
Thank you for clearing up some of my questions, I was concerned about the name. It's Gino's Pizza on the top and Sunday Gravy on the bottom, I couldn't understand what that was, but...
Correct.
Now, that was your dad's business, Gino's Pizza.
Yes.
I used to patronize probably 20 years ago or so before my system became like pizza intolerant.
Thank you for the support.
So now, explain the activation of Sunday gravy. What do you, what do you do, you have 20 employees, what's going on there?
Well, funny enough, we started just me and my sister in the kitchen, I was in the kitchen, she was in the, in the, in the front of house. And we've really just grown this business so organically and so naturally. I believe people are drawn to us because we're, we're a business that we true, we show that we truly care about the folks that walk into our establishment. We've made wonderful relationships with, with so many of our guests, and the food also... You know, we keep it simple, but we keep it delicious, we're, we're very honest about what we do there. And it's generated a following throughout the entire city. We've been written about by multiple publications. We're one of the top-rated Italian restaurants in all of Los Angeles. We've been in the LA Times, lucky enough that we were, we were the first restaurant that the Intuit Dome recognized as a partner that they wanted in their Neighborhood Eats location at the Intuit Dome. We're continuing that partnership with them next season, where we'll be serving Sunday gravy to the VIP guests that are in the suites. You know, so, so really, this is just a family business that my sister and I took over from our dad and really just brought it into the next generation through hard work and consistency. And we're able to maintain our staff and grow our staff because we're genuinely a place where they love to work at. There's a, you know, they're, they're very well compensated. I believe our, our average staff member, you know, even if they come in at a minimum wage, you know, hourly rate with tips, everybody walks at a minimum of 28 to, $27 to $28 an hour.
I can, I can appreciate that, but I'm trying to send you in a different direction. I mean, Sunday gravy, I don't know what the activation is and how it might be impacted by selling distilled spirits. We have, I mean, most businesses that size, how many square feet is the building?
500, well, the entire building's roughly 900.
900 square feet, it's the size of two garages.
Correct.
You got 20 employees in there, you're serving more than gravy. What's, what's the draw?
It's, it's wonderful food, wonderful atmosphere, you know, we, we've been...
What type of food?
Yes, sir.
What type of food?
Italian-American.
Italian-American, what's great Italian-American food.
Yeah, absolutely, and you know, for us, being able to, to, to offer, you know, I guess, new beverages on our menu, it's really more just to sort of enhance and complement beyond, beyond the beer and wine. We have no intention of being a, you know, cocktail lounge, we have no intention of being a, you know, but, but we feel that like, you know, there, there's, you know, to be able to serve like a, you know...
So it's Italian food, so you still have pizza on the menu?
We, we're actually fresh pasta focused, and we, we source our pasta locally from Florentina's Fresh Pasta, which is also a business in Inglewood. We get our bread from another local bakery in Inglewood called Cadoro. You know, so we're very much a local, local business.
This is not a dance hall or entertainment center, then you said to allow onsite sales of distilled spirits in existing restaurants, that's all you're asking for, right?
Then, no, no, no dance hall, no dancing, nothing, just, just...
No further questions, Chairman.
Commissioner Trejo?
Thank you, I thought I read somewhere that Sunday gravy is like a term for like homemade Italian food on Sundays, isn't it? I don't know where I read that.
The, 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 the Sunday gravy is a sort of East Coast tradition in New York, Rhode Island, Connecticut. It's, you know, the Sunday meal that you have at your grandma's house, and the meal that she's been cooking all day, I'm sorry, the sauce that she's been cooking all day is called the Sunday gravy, and it sort of goes on everything that she cooks. But for us, you know, we're not Italian, we're actually Iranian-American. But we also had that tradition as well in our family. We would go to my grandma's house on Sundays, but instead of, you know, red sauce and pasta, it was a stew over some rice. And I believe every culture has something very similar to that. So for us, the idea of Sunday gravy is just family and coming together.
Yeah, that's what I had read and somewhere, I don't recall where, but that it just like signifies more of a family type sitting down for dinner. So I can understand your wanting to expand the beverage offerings, much like a lot of the restaurants that have come in and are coming into Inglewood, beer, wine, and distilled spirits. And, you know, I think it's, I think it's okay to kind of allow restaurants that have a good reputation, no crime, to have the ability to serve more than just beer and wine, because I think we are getting more people coming into Inglewood. And I like the diversity, again, of having different kinds of food, Italian, even though you're, did you say Iranian?
My family's yes, from Iran.
Yeah, so the different varieties. So I think it's, again, I think it's a good, a good request that, that you're asking for your restaurant, much like we have had with others that have come in. We always ask for a one-year review, again, because we have a number of establishments that have come in asking for distilled spirits. So if this gets approved, you know, more than likely, we'll impose a one-year review so you can come back and, and see how everything is going. I would also, I was happy to hear that, that you are going to install a camera on the north side to, for where the parking area is. So that would be put in as a condition, again, if you get approved. You mentioned eating outside, that sometimes people, if they're eating outside, they use that entrance on the north side. Do you have eating tables outside?
Currently, along our, along our walkway, there's a, there's a walkway where you have tables that are, that are set up from time to time. Fridays, we set up, we have valet parking for our guests. And so because of that, we, we do have one or two tables for guests. Now, when I say that, this is, these are takeout, these are takeout guests. So they're, you know, if somebody's coming for a concert, they don't have a lot of time to wait for a table. They will order food that's eaten takeout, and we offer them a space that they're able to enjoy their meal without having to leave the venue or have to eat it in their car.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, they can't drink outside if they decide to sit outside and eat, right?
So the business licenses for onsite, they're not able to leave the premises with the alcoholic beverages?
Okay, so alcoholic beverages would just be in the restaurant? Or onsite? The walkway is part of onsite?
Yes, I mean, they, theoretically, they would be sitting down at a table, consuming the, the drink, not roaming around the parking lot and, or the, the premises.
Okay, all the more reason to put in that second security camera. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Hi, I also agree that to elevate your business, it's important to have distilled spirits. What is your signature dish? Because a lot of restaurants, such as yours, have a signature dish that draws people to your restaurant. So what is that?
It's, it's so tough to say because it's changed through the years. But when we first opened, it was our short rib ragu. It's braised short rib that we serve over homemade rigatoni noodles. And it was sort of our way of elevating a traditional bolognese. And so that quickly became the most popular item. But lately, it's the lasagna. Folks come for the lasagna. It's, it's been written about. And then we have a spicy lemon dish that was inspired by a trip that I had to Italy. And that's been very popular. I think with social media, we, we kind of have waves of popularity of some of our items. And there's never been one specific item, and it just depends on whoever makes the most viral video, and that's what, what everyone comes in for.
I like sweets, so what about sweets?
You got it. We, so our, our big, big like draw as far as a dessert goes is we do a Hawaiian bread, a Hawaiian bread, bread pudding that we make in-house. And we top that with, with ice cream, pistachio, and like a homemade Marsala caramel. So, yeah, everything we do in-house is, is homemade. We, we, we keep everything fresh and, and simple.
And how many cooks are there?
Oh, man, cooks, so me, roughly seven to eight back-of-house staff members.
Reservations?
Yes.
You do reservations?
Absolutely.
That's great. That's good to know.
Absolutely.
That's good to know.
Yeah, we do close to 300 covers each day on the, on a, on the weekends, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays.
I'm definitely going to visit. I have no further questions, Chair.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Number one is, it was Gino's Pizza at one point, and the building was constructed in 1973, and your dad came in sometime after that? Because he's, he's been around for close to 40-some years. Am I correct in saying that?
Correct. My dad actually, from the story that he told us, the, the family that had originally constructed the building, as they were nearing completion, they got cold feet regarding opening the restaurant. And my dad sort of was right place, right time, and purchased the building from them. Funny enough, he sold his, he sold his car and used the proceeds to, to buy the building and buy the property from, from the family. And then he opened it up as a sandwich stand by himself and, you know, worked there, bringing his family over. And eventually, they worked for him. And through the years, we, he opened about 12 locations throughout Los Angeles.
So when did you take over the building? When did you take over the restaurant?
We took over in August of 2019.
2019. At that time, you were just doing beer and wine? And you were actually still doing pizza? Is that correct?
Uh, no. Once my sister and I took over, we completely moved away from pizza and I went straight to becoming a fresh pasta-focused restaurant. I'm not too good at making pizza, so for me, pasta was the passion.
So your father, is he still with you?
He is, yes.
So what did he say about the idea that you changed from pizza to pasta?
My dad said, "Don't get into the restaurant business." I worked, I worked hard all my life so that you guys wouldn't have to suffer the way that I did. But he so proudly comes to the restaurant, and he's just blown away by, by what we've been able to transform it to.
Okay, so this, if we, if this is approved, how would that affect your business? If we, if it's not approved, would that affect your business? Would that affect your, the amount of income that you're going to receive? Would it reflect on your customers that come in? Tell us why it's so important for you to get a.
Absolutely.
Distilled spirits.
You know, as, as we've been able to grow and, and gain, you know, prominence within the city and within the food community, you know, one of the things that we've been approached by, by, you know, with, with, with everything that's been happening in the city. So when you, when you have, let's say, for example, like Nike coming to do an event, or, you know, they approach us and they're like, "Well, we want to throw a party. We want to throw an event at your place." And then once it gets to the question of, "Okay, can we, you know, do cocktails?" "No, I'm sorry, beer and wine only." That usually puts the end, that, that stamps the end of the conversation at that point with them.
But you were doing well with just a beer and wine license at one point. Am I correct in saying that?
We, we, you know, alcohol is not our, you know, we, we take pride in what we're, we're able to do. We, we sort of, as a, as a business, our, our whole idea has just been, you know, make the best out of every situation that we, we have. You know, we're, we've been blessed that with, with just beer and wine, we've been able to take it where we're at. But we feel that, you know, where we need to continue to take our business, and that's being able to do special events with all these great companies that are coming to do business in Inglewood, we don't want to be overlooked just because we don't have the capability of, you know, offering a cocktail for a party that, you know, a, a large business wants to, to, you know, you know, throw an event at our, at our space, for example.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I'm going to have a few more questions for you, and then we're going to turn it over to something else. I'm opening up for any final questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Fowler, you have any final questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. I would like to make sure, since this is clearly your first event, should this be voted on with alcohol, I hope you're prepared to do the training that will be required of your staff, or you're going to hire some people who've been in this business, to checking proper IDs and so forth, because that is going to be critical. So that's my comment on that. And then you mentioned an anniversary coming up, and I didn't hear the number.
Six years as, as Sunday gravy.
Yeah, six years of Sunday gravy.
Yes, and if I may add to that prior comment, as a condition of our current license, our staff already does have to go through RBS training. And so they, they're, anybody we do hire, we, we do make them do the RBS training that, that is required. Our general manager, who has extensive years working in hospitality and specifically in, 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 you know, the beverage industry, he's very, very adept at, at that training part.
And refresher doesn't hurt either.
No, no, absolutely not.
Yeah. And I also agree with the one-year review, so.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Rice?
No further questions.
Mr. Trejo?
No further questions, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No further questions, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
We'd like to open it up for those individuals who are for or against this particular project. You can go up to the mic, give us your name, and tell us about for or against. Hearing none, seeing none? We're going to close that segment. Okay. Any final comments? Is there a motion?
There's a motion, Chairman. I move to reaffirm category exemption EACE 2025-8, I'm sorry, -085, and adopt a resolution approving SUP 2500016 with the condition that interior and exterior cameras totally saturate interior and exterior spaces. This is a small place with a lot of activity, and we want to make sure that we can certainly witness everything that goes on within that facility. And I also want to add a one-year review.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. We call for any questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye. Now, you mentioned you had a six-year anniversary coming up? Is that what you said? And when is that coming? September 27th. So you're sending out invitations to the City of Inglewood staff and? Congratulations, sir. Okay, is there any appealing process?
Yes, Chairman. According to the IMC, anyone may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission on this matter. The appeal must be filed within 20 days of the notice of decision and shall be made by filing a written notice accompanied with the appeal fee.
Okay, thank you. Good job, Faye.
Item 6C, a public hearing to consider an application by Megan Devine, representing HASINWD Property Owner LLC for General Plan Amendment Number 24-0000, I'm sorry, 00002, to allow a request to amend the land use element map of the Inglewood General Plan from low density to medium density for an approximately 68-acre site, Morningside High School and Monroe Middle School, with approximately 22.87 acres designated for a proposed multiple-family residential development.
Chairman, the file is present, and notice has been given in a manner and form required by law. Planner Angel Leon Martel is prepared to give a short staff presentation. Before he does so, I would like just to make a couple of quick points of clarification at the beginning of said presentation, if you don't mind, Chairman.
Yes.
The, as you all know, the, the City of Inglewood is undergoing a comprehensive general plan update. As a part of that general plan update, there were going to be some land use designation changes throughout the city. And some of those would have to deal with some of the Inglewood Unified School District sites that have been closed. This is one of the sites. And one thing that I want to, before Angel begins his presentation, make as a point of clarification, is the original application came in for 22 acres. The total site, including the, all of the Morningside High School campus, the closed and demolished Woodworth Elementary Campus, and the Monroe Middle School Campus encompassed 68 acres. Okay? For purposes of, as you can see on the map, for the purposes of general plan land use designation consistency, we elected to include the total Morningside and Monroe Element, Monroe Middle School sites as a part of this general plan amendment and zone change, which would have been a part of our current general plan amendment as it's under the early stages of development right now. In most situations, when cities are in the process of going through a comprehensive general plan update, they would stay any future or any current general plan applications. However, this application came in prior to the commencement of our comprehensive general plan update, which is why we needed to move forward with it as it came in from, from the applicant's request. So, so there was, so just want to make a couple of points, those points of clarification. I know that in, in one of the letters that was received, that was brought up. I just would like to say that any future developments outside of the 22 acres that were analyzed in the SCA would require its own environmental analysis. Okay, so just want to repeat that. Any envi, any project that happens outside of the 22 acres that encompassed the 57, the, the proposed develop, the future development, should this GPA be recommended to the City Council for approv, approval, would require its own environmental analysis. Furthermore, a programmatic EIR is going to be conducted citywide that would also look at the future development capacity for any land use changes that are made by way of the general plan amendment and our comprehensive general plan update. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification. The school sites are remaining as they currently are. There, there is an active, Morningside High School is an active school campus. There is no development plans right now for anything to happen on that campus. Monroe Middle School is a current, is currently an active school campus. There are no development plans for anything to happen on that site. And so the changes and the incorporation of those two parcels or those two properties or sites in this general plan amendment were strictly to provide some consistency from a land use perspective. So I hope that clarifies some things moving forward, and now Angel can begin his presentation.
Thank you. Excuse me, it did, for me, it did clarify, because I had questions on that. Thank you.
Yes, so did I.
All right, thank you, Bernard. Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the commission. The subject site for the general plan amendment is located on three parcels that make up the Morningside High School and Monroe Middle School site. And they're zoned R1 or one-family residential with low-density general plan, with a low-density general plan land use designation. The site is located south of 104th Street between Yukon Avenue and 10th Av, and 10th Avenue. The Morningside High School and Monroe Middle School site encompasses 68 acres, which comprise Morningside High School, Woodworth Monroe School, and the Child Development Center. The Woodworth Elementary School campus has been demolished. The applicant is proposing a general plan amendment for the 68-acre site to amend the land use element map of the Inglewood General Plan from low-density to medium-density. The City of Inglewood General Plan was first adopted in 1968. When the general plan was adopted, the site had a public, semi-public civic center designation. The land use element was completely revised in 1980. And in 1990, the land use designation was changed to low-density. Should the Planning Commission approve this general plan amendment, this would create an opportunity to, to develop 571 townhome-style residences with 10% reserved for affordable dwellings, one dog park, two pocket parks, and two residential clubhouses. The proposed gated development would provide approximately 375,000 square feet of open space, 20,799 square feet of private open space, and 354,000 square feet of common open space. Also proposed are 1,122 parking spaces, that's two for each unit, and then 124 guest parking spaces. spaces, and 66 bicycle parking spaces. This section of the general plan land use element map depicts the existing general plan designation, and the site is marked by the red star. The existing low-density designation is presented by the color in yellow. There are properties to the north and east that are designated medium-density. Just as a... Serve as a reminder, the California Government Code requires that every city maintain a land use element as part of its general plan. The Planning Commission must determine that a proposed general plan amendment is consistent with the framework of the general plan land use map and its elements. Staff is currently working on the general plan update, which is expected to be completed in 2027. This aerial view of the neighborhood depicts the residential uses north of 104th Street, east of 10th Avenue, and also to the north are commercial uses or Costco. To the west are the resident... Are residences, to the east are residences, and there are also residences along the south side of the site. The approval of the request of the general plan amendment would change the general plan land use element map for the subject site to a medium-density designation. The general plan medium-density designation allows 23 to 43 dwelling units per acre. The medium-density designation is consistent with uses on two sides of the site, uses north of 104th Street, which include multiple-family residential, and uses as well as... As well as to the east across 10th Avenue, also multiple-family residential. The general plan amendment will also remove inconsistencies between the general plan and zoning designations. Findings have been made in accordance with the general plan standards. The proposed general plan amendment removes inconsistencies because it will align with the site's land use designation with its zoning and future residential development plans. The amendment is consistent with neighboring uses. The site is adjacent to properties with medium-density designation and supports a logical extension of that land use pattern. The proposed amendment is of adequate size and shape because the site meets spatial requirements for development consistent with the Inglewood Municipal Code. The proposed general plan amendment is able to meet infrastructure demands because the project includes onsite parking and access improvements, ensuring traffic and infrastructure compatibility. The proposed general plan amendment promotes economic and job growth because the development will create construction jobs and long-term economic activity from new residents. These are the medium land... Medium-density land use objectives. They're stated as follows: access to major shopping facilities, residential land use, and transition to more intense development. First off, the site is located adjacent to Costco nearby Century Plaza along Yukon Avenue, both recognized as major shopping centers within the city and broader region. The site's proximity to these retail destinations exemplifies the type of land use efficiency encouraged by the general plan. Residential land use, according to the general plan, optimal locations for residential development are those that offer convenient access to commercial, industrial, and other employment centers. The proposed general plan amendment supports this objective by allowing residential development near major shopping centers along Century Boulevard and within close proximity to high-traffic entertainment venues that also function as job hubs. At the proposed density, the development is expected to promote economic activity, improve community safety through increased presence, and support local businesses. Transition to more intense development, the proposed multifamily housing development would serve as a transitional land use, providing a buffer between lower-density residential neighborhood and adjacent commercial usage and other retail centers. Medium-density development in this location supports thoughtful land use transitions by reducing abrupt changes in scale and intensity. It also places a greater number of residents within walking distance of shopping and services, which can reduce the frequency and distance of vehicle trips and limit through traffic in low-density neighborhoods. The proposed project is consistent with the housing and open space elements of the general plan. The project... The proposed project is consistent with the active transportation plan and the Environmental Climate Action Plan. If the Planning Commission approves the request, the applicant will be required to complete the site plan review, parcel map, and sign permit processes. A sustainable communities' environmental assessment has been prepared in accordance with CEQA. One letter was received at the time the staff report was completed, and two comment letters were received this afternoon, which you have copies of. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions the Commission might have. The applicant is also here tonight to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. Good presentation. We want to open up questions for you, Commissioner Fowler.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have one question regarding... Oh, thank you for the explanation about the fact that both Monroe and... Middle School.
Monroe Middle School and now Inglewood High School.
Oh, and now Inglewood High School. That makes a big difference as far as... So, the rest... Anything they do here will have to deal with CEQA. The remaining...
Yes, so...
I was going to ask, what's the timeline for this project? And then, this is my question, what's the timeline for this project? And how would the updated land use impact that? I think the audience would probably want to understand that.
Right, so, just to cover what you started off with, yeah, the high school's going to remain, so is the childcare center, and then the middle school. The only thing that was demolished was the...
Correct.
Yes, the elementary school. And so, there'll be... There'll be, you know, demoting or removing some of the fields and courts in order to pave, basically, for the residential development. It looks like they have a timeline of two years, approximately?
Two years?
Yes.
Okay. So, the land use upgrades that we're proposing would require them to do certain things because of the timeline of that project. They would be within that scope, correct?
Right. And then, yeah, just to clarify, so, you know, tonight, if you agree, you'll be proposing recommendation for City Council. And so, that can't happen until at least a month, because what we're doing is we're actually recirculating the SCA doc... The environmental document.
Okay. All right, thank you. The rest of mine would be for the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rice?
Just for clarity, the high school... Morningside High School is going to stay, and then at some point, Inglewood High School will be demolished, and the students will go there and attend?
So, my understanding is Inglewood High School is actually going to be remodeled. So, what's going to happen is that they're going to be taking students from Morningside to Inglewood and vice versa, because the Morningside High School is being completely revamped, and they're adding technological equipment.
Right up... I was trying to understand how they were going to remodel both high schools at the same time.
Yeah, let me clarify. So, what's happening is that right now, as you all know, Morningside graduated its last official class at Morningside. I'm sorry, Commissioner Shaw Williams. And what... And Rice. I'm sorry. And so, what's happening is that all of the students from Inglewood High School and any students that were at Morningside would all be on the current, now Inglewood High School Campus that's located at Morningside High School. All right, so, that... There's only one public high school outside of City Honors that will be Inglewood High School on the Morningside Campus. That will remain, and the students will be going to school there until the construction for the new Inglewood High School across the street is completed. And so, then at that point, the school district will decide what would happen with the remaining portion of the campus. And just so you know, that there will be some... As we're going through our general plan update, some communication with the school district to ensure that there is some collaboration in regards to future land uses and what would happen, so that we could have some community input on what they would like to see at that site. So, you know, so, you know, it's a little... Definitely a little convoluted and a little complicated, but, you know, one thing that I want to make clear, similarly to the previous general plan amendment that we had a few months back, that any additional units, massing, scale, height increases that were not previously analyzed in the... Under this current SCA would... Could potentially trigger additional environmental review. One of the reasons why this project had taken so long to come before you today was because of the environmental analysis. There were a number of months and back and forth with city staff, our traffic division, and the like, to look at traffic, to analyze traffic patterns, and to ensure that mitigation was included to meet or improve traffic conditions along 104th, along Yukon, Crenshaw, all the way through Prairie. And so, there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of time spent working through some of those issues. And so, as it relates to just kind of the environmental component, you know, we are going to... You're recommending, should you decide to do so, you would be recommending that the City Council affirms that environmental document, in which time, the applicant will... We will take the environmental document post the responses to the comments that were received today, and allow time for... Necessary time for that to be reviewed in order for the City Council to make an affirmation or not, right, to the environmental and/or the... What's before you today?
So, there is a land density that we're approving or entitling today for 68 acres, although immediately, there are 22 acres that are going to be worked on or built.
Correct.
We're going to build 500 and somewhere around 571 townhomes.
Correct.
However, this... At this point, will this body be entitling the entire 68 acres at some point for...
No.
It will have to come back.
At some point, you... This body would work towards the entitlement of some future... Of future land use there on the remaining portions, other than Monroe Middle School, because to my knowledge, Monroe Middle School is not slated for closure. So, and so, the other area, the current Inglewood High School's location, which is... Encompasses 28 or almost 30 acres or something like that, would eventually become another land use. I would also want to make this point, and I think Angel can... What's being proposed through... And what was analyzed is well under what the maximum density would be... Maximum allowed density for the said 22 acres. So, the density allowance for the general plan amendment goes between 23 to 43 acres... I mean, units per acre. I believe they're proposing about 24 units per acre. And so, you know, they're well below what the maximum allowable density per acre would be on the said site. And once we... And so, just wanted to make that point as well.
Okay, thank you. No further questions, Chair.
Commissioner Trejo?
Well, I'm requesting additional clarification. The proposed site for the 571 units, that's owned by a private entity. Is that correct?
So, yeah, so, the proposed... The 22-acre site is under a ground lease. The developer is... Would be Heritage Development, the same group that built the Grace Park Homes. And I would also like to mention that what is being proposed is a gated community, right?
Is there any other questions?
And so, it's a gated community with 57 affordable units, and the rest... The remainder of those units would be market rate, right? And so, ideally suited for, you know, city employees to maybe potentially move in there and/or school district employees and things of that nature.
I'll slow you down.
Sorry. No problem.
Okay, so, the portion that is going to have the 571 units is leased by a developer. And the other portion where the high school is, that is still owned by the school district, including the Woodrow Elementary School Campus?
Monroe and actually the Child Development Center there at the northwest corner. Or southwest. So...
Monroe and then Woodworth.
I would... Let me... And now, and just a point of clarification, it's my understanding that Woodworth and Monroe have combined campuses. So, I just want to clarify that. So, originally, if you look at the flag... The flag lot, and there's the blue... My eyes are bad, but that says demolished.
I can see demolished, yeah.
Yeah, so, demolished. That area used to... Was the former Woodworth Elementary School Campus. Okay, that campus now is completely demolished.
Okay, so, that's part of the project?
That's correct. So, the area outlined in red is... Are the limits to the 571 units, proposed development, which, by the way, can't happen if we don't make...
Right.
Yeah, make the recommendation.
So, that's the property that we're looking at right now, although the general plan amendment includes both the high school portion, the school portion, and the proposed site portion.
Correct, correct.
Okay. And you did answer my question as far as gated community.
Yes.
Rental or...
They are rental.
All rental?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
I really don't have any questions. It's more of a comment and update, particularly since I have my monarch brother, Doc... Commissioner Rice, just to let him know that we made sure that we gathered as much memorabilia as possible from Morningside. It's being housed at Inglewood Unified School District in one of their buildings. I had the honor of seeing some of the things that we put there and cataloged everything. There's two books that outline everything that's in this storage facility. I have one, and the district has one. They have items dating back from 1951. They have every year book from 1951 to current. We have the playbooks, we have Lion Roar newspapers, we have uniforms. It's really something to see, and he and I will have to get together so we can go together and check this out. That's it.
The Morningside as well? Okay. My question has to do with the land lease. You indicated that it was a land lease. Is there a timeline on that land lease? Is it 99 years or what is it?
Yeah, not 100% sure of the specifics of the ground lease, just because that was between the school district and the applicant. So, you know, we weren't privy to those details, but the applicant may be able to speak to that.
Okay, very good, thank you. If the applicant is here, take the mic in the back and tell us about this particular project. And I understand you guys did the Grace Park development as well? Am I correct in saying that? Take... Pick up the mic. There you go. Pretend you're a rock star and hold it in your hand. No.
No.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Great, okay. Hi, my name is Kendra Casper, and I represent the applicant. Yes, this applicant is the same developer that developed Grace Park, and yes, the ground lease is a 99-year ground lease with the school district.
Okay, so, tell us about the particular project, how you guys got involved. Okay, so tell us about the particular project, how you guys got involved.
Sure.
What the plans are.
So basically, uh we responded to an RFP from the school district. And the school district awarded us the property as a ground lease to move forward, uh to request the development that we're requesting today.
So there was no bidding on this particular project, is am I correct in saying that?
What?
There was no bidding on this particular project? They just contacted you and said, we would like you guys to put this together, is that?
No, it was a request for proposal, RFP.
Request for proposal, thank you.
So there was, there was a process from the school district and we were selected as the developer to take the ninety nine year ground lease to propose the project. So yes, there was a bidding process under the RFP.
Okay. Is that it? Okay, we have questions for you. We're gonna start our questions off with Commissioner Fowler.
Uh yes, I'd like to hear more about how you see the project, the vision for the project, why it's going to be a great enhancement to the city. Thank you.
Wasn't hi, can you hear me?
Yes, it's very good.
I feel like I'm behind a cage or something, so 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 uh hi, I'm David Schwartzman. I'm the uh president and founder of Heritage Development Group. Um yes or no, so we have started, there's a new trend called build for rent housing, you know? People, not everybody can buy a house, people want to rent, but not everybody wants to rent an apartment, people have families. So across the country, I would say in the last ten years, there's been a a a switch slightly where there are planned rental communities. That are built as to look like for sale homes, but they're built to rent. They mainly cater to families. I'm doing one right now in San Pedro called Suncrest. It's part of the master plan I developed called Ponte Vista, which was seven hundred homes. Uh we're doing two hundred and twelve homes as build to rent townhouses. It's renting very well, I think we've rented about seventy five units in about a year. Uh we're building another hundred and twenty five as we're renting, so it's a little bit of a construction zone. It didn't lay out as well phasing as this site. We have another one in um Silver Lake called the Lillian along the LA River. That's a hundred units, we opened a month ago, we've rented thirty homes in one month. And so there's a big demand for this. Part of it, I think maybe was attributed to COVID, but uh in the sense of people don't want to live where there's common areas, common elevators. You drive into your own two car garage, you have your own little yard, you have your own, we have a wide raft of amenity areas. We have two different amenity areas, so the project can be split, oh, there it is, sorry. It can be split, uh there's an amenity area here and there's an amenity area here. There's also a pocket park here and I believe there's another pocket park somewhere, but I'm not seeing it right now. Oh, right there. So we have two pocket parks and two recommend centers. What's that? Well, it's on, I'm sorry, it's on the screen.
You're directing your questions and answering to us, so you're out of order. You're directing your questions and answers to the staff here.
Sorry, so there are two rec center amenity areas with pools, weight rooms, basketball court. And then there's two pocket parks within the community that are gated. But the vision of the project is it's mostly a three story townhouse, all two car garages, there might be Yuri, some of the units have a one car garage, I believe. We have some carriage units that are smaller, two to four bedroom units. Average size from eight hundred square feet to about seventeen hundred square feet on the biggest unit. It's mainly rental housing for people with families.
Okay, very good.
And just uh what is the average rent?
Uh it'll be different, you'll probably start units there, well, the affordables will be at what the affordable rates are, the low income rates. But the market rate units will probably go from for an eight hundred foot unit from twenty five hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
To up to on the high range, forty five hundred bucks, somewhere in that range for a seventeen hundred foot unit.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
I have no further question.
Okay, Commissioner Rice?
Mr. Schwartzman, I need to just kind of cut to it. Love your energy.
I try.
Hope the community loves your project as well.
Thank you.
You're um, all things being equal, everything going your way, um how soon do you think you could start developing these units?
Well, I think we have improvement drawings in process with Henrik, our engineer right here. So I I've been hoping if we got approved, that we could probably realistically start grading, probably. I wouldn't want to grade in the rainy season, maybe start grading in in March of next year, March, April. We're already processing improvement drawings, probably have, it's pretty extensive land development here. Uh you probably have ten months of land development. While we're doing that, we would be uh processing our building plans and probably start building probably like January of twenty seven, actually doing like framing and uh foundation work. But we have about nine to ten months of land development before we got to that point.
First phase completion and how many units?
Well, we're gonna build it in four phases, that's one of the mistakes I've learned from doing this, is when I did a project in San Pedro, I did two hundred and twelve in one shot. So it's a little hard to lease up. So what's really nice about this project is that we have three or four different, what I call quadrants, that we could develop. So we'll probably build this in four phases. But when we go out and build, we'll build probably just basically build, I mean, I can't point, I'm sorry, but I wish I could. Like uh along one hundred and fourth street, those units up there probably be the first phase along there. And then we'd probably go through the entrance, down to the back, going all the way down to the bottom, that'd be phase two. And then phase three would probably be going back from the bottom up to one hundred and fourth street. Probably three to four phases of building, realistically.
And if you have five hundred and seventy one units, that's about a hundred and twenty some units per phase.
Yes. That's what we did in 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 our project along Blake Avenue, along the LA River, we built a hundred in one shot. We're doing another one right now in Granada Hills, that's a hundred and forty that we're doing right now, we're getting ready to open that. Depending on the Department of Water and Power, probably in the next sixty days.
And you're going vertical with um January twenty twenty seven?
That's what my hope is, assuming my grading plans are approved by March of twenty six, yes.
Meanwhile, you'll be working on the infrastructure for?
Yeah, we're already working, we're already drawing the infrastructure, we've already started pre-engineering on that now.
Project completion after on phase one, if you if you were fortunate enough to start January twenty twenty seven?
What's that, sorry, I didn't hear your question?
At the completion?
Uh you from a completion standpoint, if you're building a hundred, it probably about fifteen months to build a phase, sixteen months from start, from foundation pores for the whole phase.
You have a do you have a team out that's gone out in the community and talked to members of the community to let them know?
Jason Lombard. Who works with us, is our partner in the deal. So Jason has talked to people in the community and we've talked to some people and we've obviously done a lot of talking with the school district, who we mainly had to talk with. And to answer some questions too, the the school district hired CBRE as a broker, there's a broker here tonight who's with CBRE. They hired CBRE, CBRE did a solicitation where they went, they advertised for three months to get bids for an RFP. We responded to an RFP, there was then probably a four to six month interview process. And during that time, we were selected, I don't know how many people bid, I have no idea. I know two people that bid besides me, that I do know that bid, but I don't know how many bidders there were. We were selected and then over a period of about six months or so, we negotiated the ground lease, which is a ninety nine year ground lease.
Grace Park project came out very well.
Yes.
Congratulations.
I was the land developer, I didn't build the homes, I actually um was the land developer, I'm mainly a land developer, I've been a home builder. Uh I do a lot of build for rent now, but I'm, we're a pretty large land developer, we specialize in doing a lot of infrastructure development.
Thank you, no further questions, Sheriff.
Commissioner Trillo?
Um well, one of my questions was, are these rental units, and yes, they are.
Yes.
Another question was, is it a gated community? Yes, it is. A third one is, since it's a rental project, are there homeowners association fees? And I ask that because common grounds, like some of the common, some of the co- common areas, who will be?
We take care of it.
Okay, so the residents will not?
No.
Will not be charged.
Part of your operational cost of the project for the developer, the owner.
Okay. Uh that's it for my questions right now, thank you.
My pleasure.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
What's the name of uh the development?
Haven't come up, we have to hire a whole marketing team and branding team, that that's, you're you're ahead of me, but we'll we'll have something. Um our project in San Pedro is called Suncrest, honestly, I have no idea why, but we're near the harbor. Uh our project on the LA River is called Lillian, uh Yuri, what are we calling Granada Hills? Solterra, so I didn't, it'll be, I don't know. Maybe City of Champions, I don't know, some Championship Lane or something like that, maybe something to honor Inglewood properly. But I I really, we haven't, we hire a marketing team and that's what we'll come up with at that point in time.
And how many guest spaces again? I'm sorry.
Uh well, we have every unit is two uh, every unit except the carriage units are two car parked. But I think guest spaces are parked a hundred and twenty four, so without even guessing. On top of your own garage parking, which is eleven hundred and something? Yeah, eleven twenty five, something like that, I'm not very good at math, but yes.
Okay, so that open field that separates the three schools is where you're gonna be at?
It will live like a like a your own home, but that you're renting. So you're getting, what I what I really like about it, and I've said this, I've talked on panels about this, but. People that are renters are somewhat discriminated against because they're always forced into apartments. So you're giving a renter a better choice of a better product to raise his family. Not everybody has the credit or the down payment, but they might have the income, but they could have a credit history in the past, something like that. So you're giving people a chance to live in a home, but not have to buy the home to rent. Because it's very hard to find that. In a community that where you're not the renter on the block, living with thirty other people that own their house. You're in a a community of renters, you're all together, you're not stigmatized because you're the one renter on the block with the thirty homeowners.
The plus to this is that uh Monroe Woodworth, if there's families uh there, they can send their children right in the backyard.
There's there's a, there's a huge plus to this on a few levels. So one is, the school district's getting a lot of money. Two, on top of that, the school district gets paid by the state for enrollment. So if you're building a a a housing project that caters to family, think of all the kids that are gonna go there, that are then gonna actually go and help Inglewood USD. And are actually gonna save the school district, because the school district's been having a lot of financial issues and they're having to close schools. So by us bringing people to the area, we are helping the school district. So anybody that would oppose this project is basically saying, I don't care about the Inglewood schools. And that's what it's really saying. So at the end of the day, we're doing a good service here, we're bringing affordable housing and housing workforce housing to an area. And we're helping the school district in the process, not just by paying the ground lease, but by the money the state pays to the school districts for enrolling students. And Inglewood right now has a slipping enrollment, I've been to hearings with people in my office. And the school, if you look at a ten year pattern of the attendance of Inglewood schools, it's very sad. And this is a way to ho- help re-bolster and re-energize the school district. So on top of the school district getting money, they're getting, I think they get like eleven or thirteen thousand dollars a year, a child. So all of a sudden, if you bring four, five hundred kids into the district, that's five, six million dollars a year that the state is now paying to help educate. And you're not closing schools. And I think that's very important.
Well, I'm very familiar with the enrollment, I went to Woodworth from kindergarten, I went to Monroe and I graduated from Morningside. So I know what the enrollment looked like when I was going, which was very high. And my dad also served on the Board of Education, so I'm very familiar with the numbers and how it transitioned to where we are now. No further questions, thank you.
Okay, very good, I have a a one question, you indicated that that you, the community is aware of what's going on, you've already spoken to the community. You've been to um block club meetings, District One meetings.
Just can I have Jason answer that?
Hey, I haven't, can I answer the question, sir?
Perfect, thank you.
Go to the mic.
Come on, Jason, I'm sorry.
District four, sorry, I said one. My question would be, that particular de- development is going to be in District Four. So is District Four aware of this particular project coming up? Have you gone out in District Four, have you gone to any block club meetings, have you gone to any district meetings? Have you consulted with the city council person in that district to make sure that this development is well suited and well invited to the community?
We have had the discussions within District Four, um as I think you you all know, with projects and and construction, what happens is. You end up having ongoing conversations, so we've been having ongoing conversations from the beginning, uh block clubs, HOAs. Whichever, you know, if if there are ever any HOAs that wanted to have a a conversation, uh when it comes to me, I go everywhere. So uh there's been the the offline conversations and then the online conversations. Uh to be able to talk about this, there, you know, the I think the first thing that we've had to do was uh eliminate some of the confusion that was there around the high schools. Being able to know, let people know, as as you've seen in this meeting, uh let people know and clarify that it's not, if this project is not the high school. Because what came through was uh con- conversations and information that said Morningside. So they look at Morningside and they think of this as being a closure of the high schools. That's been what's come from the community and we've been able to uh correct that sentiment.
Okay, so the council person for that particular district is uh Dion Fault. So my, I do know she had a district block club meeting recently. I was there.
Okay.
I'm not sure if, I didn't see you guys there.
I was not at that at the the recent meeting, no.
I had gone to the previous meeting as well. So my point is that we want the community be, we want the community to know what's going on in the area. We want you to come to the community and say, hey, this is what we're gonna do. We want your input on what we want to do here.
Absolutely, I I think that's the way that we we operate as a team. Um what we do is we will go to the places that we know people are. And then when we find out about uh places where people are that we haven't been able to reach, we will also go there. So uh with. Month, uh in the months, you know, preceding after that, to be able to have those conversations. Uh we have a very open team, we have a very open communication, community wise, uh and we want to be able to be a community partner as we come in. Uh as you can see, just energy wise from the development team, uh that's the way that we operate.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Could I get your name as well?
My name is Jason Lombard with the Lombard Circle.
Okay, I'm gonna find out, any last questions from our commissioners, Commissioner?
No further questions.
Commissioner Rice?
One more question for Mr. Schwartzman.
Thank you.
Make it a brief question.
This is gonna be quite sometimes a long question.
Brief answer.
I wouldn't do that to you, Sheriff. Five hundred, five hundred and seventy one homes being built. Assuming you're gonna put this in four phases?
Four to five potentially.
Four to five phases with a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty houses being built per phase. Each phase, as you build them, are you putting the affordable housing components in with each phase? Mixing those in or are you putting affordable housing in one area?
No, you're 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 spreading equally within the project.
Equally?
Yeah.
Okay, no further questions.
Commissioner Trillo?
Um I don't have anymore, I think my questions have been answered, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Yes, I want to connect with um Jason, we're having a street fair. I'm gonna give you my card and I would like your information, because I want you to be present at that street fair at Century Heights. A hundred and fourth, a hundred and eighth, and a hundred and second. And like I said, I I can't recall the date, so I need to give you my card and I need to get your information so I can send you a invitation. So you can come speak to the residents. Okay.
Okay, I have no further questions, thank you very much. Uh at this time, we're gonna open it up for those who are in favor or against this particular project. Please take the mic and state your reasoning. You only have one minute, you're gonna be timed, please, there's a lot of us, so we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak, but you only have one minute, thank you.
My name is Salvador George and I'm a member.
Hold on, just one second, stop the time, please. I don't want people to come up after one gets finished, so if you go and line up, that way we can get through this as quickly as we possibly can. So you have an additional five minutes, sir, thank you.
I'll take the five minutes, thank you.
Five seconds.
My name's Salvador George, I'm a member of the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. I live in the local area, live and work and recreate in the vicinity of the project. I believe that I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of the project. The city should require the project to be built by contractors that will hire locally, pay prevailing wage and utilize apprentices from state certified apprenticeship programs. Workforce requirements reduce construction related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a recent twenty twenty report titled Putty California on the High Road, A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for Twenty Thirty. The California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying and upskining California workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that the local hire requirements can result in air pollutant reductions. And I will.
Take your five seconds.
Recently, the state of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through Affordable Housing and High Roads Jobs Act of twenty twenty two. Otherwise known as Assembly Bill AB twenty eleven, which requires projects to pay workers a prevailing wage and hire from state certified apprenticeship programs. For projects meeting certain citing affordability and development standards.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We oppose this project, thank you.
Next.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
My name is Brianna Dorsey, I am a sixth period carpenter apprentice. And I, as a carpenter, we oppose this project. And I, as a carpenter, we oppose this project for multiple reasons. But before I get into that, as a human, as a single mother, as a person who frequents, lives in, and have worked in Inglewood in the past, I want to say that, um, how many is it? Like fifty-something low-income? One percent of those units that they are trying to build is affordable housing or low-income? It doesn't make sense. So out of five hundred and seventy-one units, only one percent? Ten percent?
Yeah.
Ten percent. It's still, it's still nothing, to be honest. It's still nothing. But also, as a union carpenter, if you're not using union carpenters that live and work and, and have students in that area, why would you build there? You're putting money into other people's pockets who's not really in the city.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Wims, and I'm a journeyman carpenter at Western States. Um, I grew up in the city. I'm from LA, I'm from Inglewood. I've played football on those fields at Morningside. And, uh, we all know what it is, you know, what's really going on, and it sounds good, the presentation was great, but what does the college community benefit? Are the workers on that job going to be able to make a wage to live in those buildings? The ten percent that is being put up for affordable housing? Or is the, is it really about the potential of making three million dollars a year in rent and allowing no one else to own around the area the main goal? The, my, my concern and why we're opposing it, because it's not really going to benefit the community. And if so, I feel that in implementing the labor standard so that we can make sure that the community benefits from this project, and the people that live here can work here and spend here, and, and continue to expand, expand on community economics and community wealth. Because it seems like this is one entity that's going to benefit from this project.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Isaiah Jamerson. I've been a resident of Inglewood for thirty years. Um, to say honestly, uh, standing in high school, I wouldn't see myself standing here in front of the council, fighting for something. Uh, I'm a part of the union, Southwestern, I'm a second-stage apprentice. And, uh, we oppose this, uh, this project as, as a group, because it's not benefiting what we stand for as a community. Like I said, standing here is, uh, you know, I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous. But, uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Let me advise you that this is not a, an arena. This is a, a meeting for, a business meeting, so there will be no clapping of any sorts at this particular meeting. We understand your, your concerns about it, and I do understand what you're talking about. But we're not going to have any of this uproar and clapping and stuff. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Verleen Scholes, and I am a resident of Inglewood, right at Crenshaw and a hundred and, uh, Fourth Street. And I am opposed to this project because, number one, number one, first and foremost, I take offense for your stats about the decline of the Inglewood, uh, area, the school district, and how much one student is bringing in. I take offense to it. Because we are a community here, I've been, I'm a homeowner here, and I feel that it's not the investors are making money and not the community. Build something that's going to entitle all of our community, but not something who can afford working every single day to pay upward of four thousand dollars per rent. People cannot afford that. Now, investors, maybe you can, but I can't. I work every single day. I own my home, but I can't afford four, forty-five hundred dollars for a rental.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's what's happening. Thank you for listening.
Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Kaisha Williams, and my family and I have reside in, um-
But you're-
-Inglewood for over forty years. Over fifty years. Can you hear me? Oh, sorry. Um, I am also too an alumni from Morningside High School. However, I have some concerns. Um, for one, I'm on the south side of a hundred and eighth street. So my concerns are parking, which I know you guys said that you have a hundred and twenty-four parkings, but there is no parking at all on our block. We can't even have a company, um, come to our home. Also, um, I'm also concerned about a gate maybe being put up. I'm on the backside of Monroe. So, um, when they were doing the construction to Monroe, it caused a lot of rodents and gophers to come over to the other side. So I'm wondering if this do goes, or if this pass, um, will there be a gate put up for the, um, residents along the side of a hundred and eighth street? Um, also, La Mole, which is a street that's blocked off, where I believe the twenty-two acres will be for these, um, rental homes, would that street be opened up? Um, we already have a problem where we cannot make a left on a hundred and eight. We have to go all the way around just to go on the side of Century Shopping Area or Costco and all that area there. So I do have those concerns there, um, which I believe is going to affect the, um, community and the residents on a hundred and eight, south side.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, my name is Vivian Hadler. This is my daughter, and we've, I've owned the property on a hundred and eighth street, which is on the north-backside of Morningside Monroe. It's a big field there. So I'm concerned about if they're building apartments that's going to be three stories high, that's going to affect a lot on that back end, because that's my yard back there. And also, I just want to piggyback on, one of the ladies said earlier about the price of these apartments being twenty-five to forty-five hundred a month. Who can afford that? And, uh, someone commented on the, uh, the schools, that the kids will be right there, that people can't afford to pay that, who have kids, that will be going to any schools in that area. So that's not going to increase enrollment, not at all. Because their parents can't afford to pay that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Nidia Melgar. I live on a hundred and four in Yukon, two, like, two houses from Yukon, so right where they're building. Uh, my biggest concern is traffic. I work at Centinela Hospital, I've been there for thirty years, working at Centinela. And, uh, I work on a shift for on-call for, uh, emergency surgeries. And it took me forty-five minutes to go to hu- to hundred and four to Centinela Hospital, when I have to go to a surgery, for emergency surgery. And it happened last couple of weeks, probably, a couple of weeks, that there was a patient having emergency surgery from the sofa stadium that had a, uh, an incident in there. So it took me forty-five minutes to get there. So we have all this traffic already, and with this construction, it's going to get worse, not going to get better. And I was thinking what she was saying, the same thing. People who come and are able to pay this much, they're not going to send their kids to Morningside. And we all know it. There's nothing new. Even we're trying to get our kids outside when we can. So I know rich people are not going to have their kids in Inglewood, that's for sure. So traffic is my biggest concern.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Ladonna Hamilton. I live across the street from Morningside High School. And I've been living there now for over thirty years. I am very also concerned about traffic, but I'm also concerned about lack of community input and information about this project to the community. I heard nothing about what would be a benefit to the community besides what would benefit the people inside of that small community, they're going to be a part of that small community. I'm also very concerned that more than likely, this project will continue to encompass most of Morningside High School. That's a lot of traffic, not much has been done to mitigate or to deal with the traffic that's already problematic within the area. Those of us who live there do not come out on Saturdays and Sundays when there's football games. We definitely love the fact that there's things that are happening, but there aren't very many things that are actually happening for residents within the area that have lived there and have been a part of this thriving community that people are now trying to be part of.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close this segment here. And I need, um, final comments from my commissioners, um, because I see a lot of individuals in the audience that are opposing this particular project and some valid reasons as well. I do know that, um, the city councils, this is going to go to the city council, and either we approve it or disapprove it. We actually, they're requesting an amendment to the land use element map for the City of Inglewood's general plan. That's what our job is. So what we're doing here on the dais here is just, we're approving or disapproving the, um, the general plan-
Chair.
-for low and density and medium and density. And let me finish before you, you go. That's what our job is here. So when I talked to this, um, city attorney, he indicated that what we can do is you would have to talk to your, you can come to the city council's meeting, and you can express your opinion at that particular point. I do understand what your feelings are. I, I highly recommend that, that the community is aware of what's going on, that they come out and express what they're going to do and ask for input. Also, you indicated about jobs in the area. That has to be something that the city council, um, you have to go to the city council for that to happen. We can't do that here. Um, I think our city planner has something you want to say, so please help me out.
Yes, just a quick point of clarification for the record. Um, the action that you will be taking tonight would not be an approval. Um, it would be a recommendation. So you would be, um, adopting a resolution that would recommend, um, that the city council, um, make a decision whether, and to either affirm or deny the, the general plan amendment. So I just wanted, just wanted to make that clarification for the records for the people in the audience.
Uh, thank you very much for saying that. So you heard what he had to say. It's, this is a recommendation. So once it goes to the city council, then you have an opportunity to go to the city council, like you're doing now, and the city council listens to you. And each district, District Four especially, you have an opportunity to talk to your city councilperson, and she will be able to go over everything with you. You also have an opportunity to go to the District Four district meetings, so you can display what your information that you want to do. The community, we want our community to be involved in each aspect of our community, because they're the ones who live here, and they're the ones who are going to be affected. So we want them to get involved in what you want to do. You just, it's not coming into a community and taking over. It's coming into a community and help build a community, so they can be a part of it. By saying that, um, any last comments from our commissioners?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't want the, uh, community to think we haven't heard what you're saying. Um, I did see the staff take notes about the traffic and the parking. So don't think things are not being heard. Uh, remember, this is just the proposal or the recommendation. Uh, they still have to pass design and a whole lot of other things, should this even go forward. Uh, I'm hoping that the developers can share with you other projects where they've used, uh, the people that are paid in the community, their labor projects, their, who they're using. And I think I would suggest to them that they might want to talk about that and share that, uh, with the community. Uh, because, uh, we're here to, to build housing. I mean, the state has almost mandated housing, just so you know. The beauty of this, though, this does take into the case for renters who can't own. And so there are some pluses to it, but like anything else. But if I lived in District Four, I would not miss any District Four meetings. I would not miss, yeah, I, you do, you don't have to live in Century Parkies to go to that meeting and hear Mr. Lombard's presentation. So the key is to make your concerns known and how they react and respond. Uh, I'm sure the, Mr. Swartzman will listen, I think he heard you. So let's see.
Commissioner Rice?
I concur, my colleague. We absolutely hear the community, we're stakeholders here also. And we certainly don't want to approve anything from this dais that negatively impacts the community. So we're going to take as much time as we need to make sure we get all the right answers that we need and make the right decisions. But no further questions, no further statements, Chair.
Commissioner Trejo?
Well, one of the things I like about this is that we get a lot of people from the, the community that come out to let us know how they're feeling and what they want to see. One of the thing, and, and that's really refreshing, because we don't always have that when we're, when we're, uh, considering a project. But one of the things that we also have to look at is that the state pretty much tells us what we need to do in, in a lot of things. One of them is housing. We're supposed to come up with ways to have, uh, to provide additional housing in the City of Inglewood. There's a number of seven thousand and some units that the state is requiring us to provide. And in many respects, our hands are tied, and we have to look at ways to, uh, provide that housing that is being required of the mun- of the municipality. This is one of the ways, and probably one of the bigger projects, that we've had in a while that provides a, a large number of units. And like the chairman said, we have a developer coming in with a type of, uh, project that we don't normally see in Inglewood, particularly with this large number of units. Maybe not everyone can, can afford it. But I think you, as parents, grandparents, have encouraged your children to go to university, to get either trade jobs that pay pretty well, or doctors, lawyers, tradesmen, plumbers, whatever. They're maybe in a little higher income bracket. So we're looking at keeping those individuals in the City of Inglewood. So their parents, grandparents, I can see some of the individuals. I, I don't know whether everybody agrees with me, but that's how I see it. We're trying to keep, um, younger generation in Inglewood also, um, and provide housing for them. Provide housing for, uh, family-type of housing that maybe have two bedrooms, three bedrooms, that they may normally not get if something like this isn't provided. So I think, again, I, I know that there is a lot of concerns, but I see a lot of positives. But the main thing we have to keep in mind is that the state is requiring us to provide seven thousand and some units. This is only really a drop in the bucket, and we have to look at other places. But this is a project that I think is well-thought-out. Maybe needs to be tweaked some, uh, maybe with additional input that the community provides. Um, you'll have something that will maybe not satisfy everything that you want, but at least some of it. So, um, I think that, that, that they do want to be a part of the community. I know Grace Project has been very successful, and I think that this will be very successful in the community if approved, again, with your additional input on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
You know, it's very important that you get involved with the meetings, the town hall meetings that we have in District Four. I believe the next one's coming up September seventeenth. So, uh, if, if you have concerns and questions at that time, that's when you should come out and, and address your concerns also. Um, if you have concerns with parking and traffic, there is a commission, and they meet once a month. I don't, uh, Bernard, do you know when they meet? The Parking and Traffic Commission?
I believe it's the fourth Wednesday of the month.
You should attend that meeting and address your parking and tr- uh, traffic concerns at that meeting. Again, we are all here, we're looking out for the best interests of the community. Um, my family moved in Inglewood in nineteen sixty-six, so, uh, I'm def- always looking out for the best interests of my neighbors and my community. Thank you, no further statements or questions or concerns.
I have no other questions. So is there a motion on the floor?
Motion. I recommend that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending approval to City Council of GPA twenty-four dash zero 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 two. I recommend that the City Council affirm the Sustainability Community Environmental Assessment, E.A.S.C.E.A. two thou- two zero two-five dash zero three five.
Second.
Okay, is it properly moved in second? We call for any questions? I do have a question. My question and statement is, this, this approval will go to the next step, to the city council. So once it goes to the city council, then at that particular point- So once it goes to the city council, then at that particular point, they'll have an opportunity to approve it or disapprove it. So the community, you have to keep with your councilperson, I suggest. Talk to your councilperson first. And then, I don't know when it's coming to the city council, but you have to go onsite, go online. And then you'll know when it's going to be part of the agenda. That's my question and statement. Call for the vote. It's been properly moved in second. I did the question. Now we call for the vote.
Commissioner Fowler.
Aye.
Commissioner Rice.
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams.
Aye.
Sharon Springs.
Aye. So again, please, take advantage of your political activists that you have. Your councilperson is Dionne Fault, Dionne Fault. She's your councilperson. Make sure that you get in contact with her. There is a meeting on September.
I believe September 17th, the town hall meeting at Hollywood Park.
Chairman.
Yes, thank you.
Before I read the appeal or the next steps, just a shameless plug. Next level Inglewood, please come and be heard at the community meeting on September 6th. Another opportunity to make your voices heard. And to that point, Chairman, according to the IMC, your recommendation will be forwarded to the city council for their consideration.
Okay. Okay, we have 6D.
Item 6D, a public hearing to consider an application by Megan Devine representing.
Madam Secretary, can you hold on just a minute for me, please? We're going to take a five-minute break. So those individuals that want to leave, they can do that. We want a quiet. So we'll take a five minutes. We're going to convene at 8:55, 8:55.
I tell you what, I graduated from the National Association of Real Estate Brokers. Class of 2025. Developers license. Yes, pretty much. Everybody, Morningside, ain't no school.
Are we calling our meeting back to order, please? We're going to convene our meeting now. Please take your seats. We're going to start our meeting, please. Our meeting starts in 30 seconds. Our meeting starts in 15 seconds, please. Thank you. Madam Secretary, could we go to the next item?
LC for zone change number 24-00001. To allow a request to change the zoning from R1, one-family residential to R3, multiple-family residential. For an approximately 68-acre site, Morningside High School and Monroe Middle School. With approximately 22.87 acres designated for a proposed multiple-family residential development.
Chairman, if I was present. And notice and time has been given in a manner as required by law. Planner Angel Leon Martel is available to do a brief. Staff presentation.
Thank you, Bernard. Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the commission. So the subject site for this zone change request is the same as the previous general plan amendment. Which is on Morningside High School and Monroe Middle School site and is zoned R1. Same aerial, same project location. These are the findings for the zone change. The applicant is requesting to change the zoning designation from R1 to R3. There's four zone change findings in place that the Planning Commission must make and the project must meet. These findings have been discussed thoroughly and met based on the project details and the findings as following. The first one is the consistency with the general plan. The proposed zone change will create consistency with the general plan land use element designation of the medium density if approved, extending the R3 zone westward along 10th Avenue and south along 104th Street. Number two, the appropriateness of the site for the proposed zoning. The site is ideally suited for R3 zoning because it is directly adjacent to R3 zoning properties. Again, along 1/4th and 10th Avenue. Also, the site's proximity to industrial, entertainment, and retail shopping offers a strategic opportunity to locate residential uses, your thriving commercial services that provide employment opportunities. Number three, no special privileges are granted. The zone change request adheres to the city's standard public review and entitlement processes and does not grant the applicant any special privileges. Any further development on the site must comply fully with the R3 zoning and affordability regulations. With development standards that may include height, density, parking, and so on. Including objective design standards. Number four, no detriment to the community or establishment of unique standards. The rezoning supports established community planning goals facilitated by patterns already envisioned in the general plan. The transition to R3 zoning will not result in adverse impacts or the establishment of incompatible standards. So here on the map shows the general vicinity of the site with the current zoning designation. As you can see, it's kind of an island there with the R1 zoning. And here is what the proposed map would look like. The brown is accentuated a little bit more, but to the north, as I've mentioned, we have R3 zoning. And to the east as well, we have R3 zoning. And then R2 zoning south as well as west of the property. We also want to highlight the M1L or light industrial zoning, which is where the Costco site is. Again, if approved, this creates the opportunity for the development of the residential property. So as conditioned, the proposed project will serve as an enhancement to its neighborhood setting and will fully comply with the general plan. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan. It's also consistent with the city's active transportation plan, environmental climate action plan. And if approved, this project will also need to go through parcel map site plan review. It must comply fully with the Inglewood municipal code. The draft scale was prepared as in accordance as well for the zone change. Comments were received. You've received those letters. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions the commission may have, and the applicant is still here to answer your questions.
Thank you, Angel. Questions? Start off with Commissioner Fowler. Commissioner Rice.
Height of construction in the R3 zone?
Yes, let me see. I believe it is. Right, three stories, but 45 feet, that's the number I was looking for, yeah.
Thank you. No further questions.
Commissioner Trejo.
When you mentioned height, I don't know where the appropriate venue is to mention. Something that one of the community people mentioned that. If you have something that's a little bit higher, looking down into their yard. Is there something that the planning department can look at or recommend, or we can recommend? That it be included, that either frosted, some kind of treatment that would prevent. That would allow the continued privacy of those that.
Yes.
Right back up on.
We can kind of condition that. Windows on higher stories be strategically located, also the size of the windows as well. And I think you also mentioned frosted windows. Yes, we can definitely do that. The buildings are set back from the property line as well. So that was, you know, something that was, I know was developed throughout the process. We could look at that further as well.
Yeah, I think that's important because like my house, I live in an R1, my neighbor's house is two stories. And they look right down into my yard, into my driveway, so I know how that feels.
Yeah, just a quick point of clarification. We wouldn't condition it, but we would make sure that we would note that those corrections be made as a part of their site plan review application. So that's something that we'll make sure that we pay very close attention to. And I think to your point about the thoughtfulness in the layout of the development. Those homes that are situated adjacent to that Lamoli entrance and face those R2 properties. Actually, those are the front of those units. So those are set back a little bit. And so we can work on, you know, some potential step backs on the second floor and the third floor to help create further separation between and create additional privacy.
Okay, that's great. Anywhere where that, you know, is appropriate.
Right.
And what else? Anywhere where that's appropriate. I think that's the main thing. I think all the questions I had were answered. But I think one of the things we really need to stress a little bit more when we have projects like this is the fact that the state requires us to do this housing. And that's why sometimes we have to make decisions that, you know, people don't like. But part of it is because, I mean, we're required to provide all of this housing. And we have very little land in Inglewood now. I mean, we had, you know, as I was mentioning to the commissioner, we had Daniel Freeman Hospital that went away, so we were able to build housing there. SoFi Stadium, 300 acres there, so we've been able to build housing. And now we have this. So, but so much of it is because the state is requiring us. And I think that has to be an emphasis in any of the presentations that are made to the community.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we, and we're very intentional too about how we meet that mandate. One of the points of note, I think it's important to mention that in this development, when you break down R3 density standards, right? At the highest density point, our code currently allows one unit for every 1,100 square feet, right? Their density based on what's being proposed is one to 1,700. So they're still far less than what our code would allow them to build should they have built to the R3 development standard. Now, I'm not saying that they're going to add more units. But, and if they did, we would have to take another look at the environmental. The environmental analysis. But I'm just saying that to say that, you know, there was some thought in not overbuilding the site, right? And understanding that it is a densely populated area and that there are some inherent traffic, you know, things that need to be considered that were examined thoroughly in this process. And so I just thought that it would be important just to mention that as a part of this time here.
One other question that is, I know it's a gated community and a lot of their guest parking is parking along the interior streets, correct? They're not going to need parking permits, a parking permit area for those, right? Because it's a gated community and others are not going to be able to come in there?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw Williams.
I have no questions.
Okay, I have no questions. Angel, very good. If the applicant is here, come talk to us about your project.
Sorry, so a few things. One of the things I'd like to, actually, when we bought Daniel Freeman, I want to go back a little step to understand the planning because I think it's very important for everybody to understand. When we actually bought Daniel Freeman, we didn't initially entitle it. We bought it from another developer who. We bought it from another developer who entitled the site for, I think, 300... No, we did 226. He had like 350. We actually took the product and redesigned down because it wasn't very livable. And sometimes in densities, you can get more density, but there's a livability as well. And to have your own separate garage, not tandem, two-car garage, to do some of the design elements we do, we actually can get a better product with less density. I mean, we could have gone more, but it just didn't make sense from a livability standpoint for families to create the first floors they wanted to. I personally, there's a product, it's called the Interlocking Townhouse, where you can build like 32, 33 of the acre. I don't want to build that kind of product per se. I have a little area of it where I'm doing some. But in general, because of different unit mixes, we wanted to make this more of a family-style development for families, for children. So we tried to make it more attainable. We're very excited about the project. One of the other things I heard about what they made us do in Grace Park, we had some homes behind us. I think we planted Italian cypress along the back as a buffer that we did before. We worked with Chris Jackson, I think, on that project. And Eddie, I don't remember Eddie. I don't know if he's still at the city. We worked with Eddie and Chris Jackson. And we planted a whole row of Italian cypress along one of the back boundaries of the site. We also had a historic tree on the site. So I think, listen, we're here to work with you. We come in, we do it right. We will... Jason was outside talking to homeowners about organizing a meeting for them, for their separate block club. But we're excited to this. I think, again, to understand the product that we're offering here is really unique. It is being done nationally, but Los Angeles, because of the cost of land, it's sort of a market that's been forgotten for this build-for-rent, single-family planned housing developments for rent communities. Just, people don't do it here. So we've had an opportunity now three times. This would be our fourth site. I invite you guys, if you want to come out and tour one of my sites, you can go out to Blake Avenue in Frogtown, in Silver Lake. We have 100 units that are built. Like I said, we've rented. We opened for rent in June. I think we have 30-something units leased out of 100. In seven weeks, it's doing very well. Families, we have another one in San Pedro called Ponte Vista, which is along Western Avenue. It's the old Army barracks. I don't know if people know. We developed that site. We came in from another developer that had failed. We bought the site. It was 50% graded. And within 12 months, we had the site. We did about $35 million of infrastructure work. And we had model communities going up with several different home builders that were building communities in the area. We're about ready to open another one in Granada Hills. So we think it's being very well received. It's something that is not offered in the Los Angeles greater metro. People talk about rents and affordability. If you go over to Inglewood, to the project that Mr. Cronky's building, he's got apartments that are 1,200 square feet that are $5,000, $6,000 a month. So as an affordability play, to live in an apartment, you're living in a house. We're doing a heavy amenitized community, like I said, with two rec facilities within the community, two separate rec facilities, two pocket parks. So we're very much heavily amenitizing the project.
I'm going to stop you just for one moment, okay? Because I want you to talk about what we're talking about here, the zoning change, that's what we're...
Oh, I thought you wanted the project, I'm sorry.
That is the project, sir.
Oh, then I need Kendra, sorry.
Hi, Kendra Casper. So yes, we're requesting the zone change to allow for the 571 units. And as was mentioned previously, that is far less than actually what's allowed in the R3 zone. The R3 zone would allow one unit per 1,100 square feet. And we're doing significantly less than that. But we would need the zone change to match with the general plan amendment to allow for the 571 townhome units.
Okay. Very good. So we have some questions for you, okay? We're going to start off with Commissioner Fowler.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rice?
I want to make sure I understood. You said the R3 zone was restricting? Or you're asking for an R3 zone in order to be able to put in 571 houses?
No, we're asking for the R3. We're currently in R1, which is a lower, much lower density. So to be able to put in 571 units, we are requesting the R3 zone, which would match up with the general plan amendment that we just spoke about.
And if it stayed R1, how many units would you be able to put in?
I think that's one unit per six acres. I mean, six units per one acre. Six units per one acre. I'm sorry, it's late. Six units per one acre. So 130 units about. 130, 133 units?
All right, no further questions, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Trejo?
No, no more questions or comments, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No questions, thank you, Chair.
Okay, I have no questions either. Okay, at this particular point, we open it up for comments. Anyone either for or against this particular project, you can go to the mic, give us your name and state your reasoning. You have one minute. Seeing, hearing, none, we're going to close this segment. Any final questions or comments from the Commissioners on the dais? Commissioner Fowler?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Trejo?
No more, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No, thank you.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion on the floor, please?
Motion. I recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending approval to the City Council of ZC 24-0001.
Second.
Who's seconded?
Second, Fowler.
Commissioner Fowler. Okay, we have... Is property moved in second? We'll call for any questions. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Fowler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye. Mr. Bernard?
Chairman, according to the IMC, your recommendation will be forwarded to the City Council for their consideration.
Okay, thank you. That's it for you. All right, at this particular point, public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission on anything in their jurisdiction may do so at this time. Hearing none, seeing none. We're going to close that segment. Now we want to have our Commissioners' initiatives. We're going to start off with Commissioner Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to reiterate congratulating our two new... They were techs, what are they now? Planning?
Assistant planners.
Assistant planners, right. Faith and Ryan, so good luck to you. Welcome to the party. I also, at this time, want to thank all of the people in the community because it was a huge event. They came out for Family Unity Day at Darby Park last Saturday. I think everyone had a good time, head by all, as they say. So many people were pleased. I think when we said free food, they didn't believe it. But I think we had food till 3 o'clock. We were shocked. But it was a great event. And Councilmember Gray is very appreciative. And we look forward to seeing you next year, bigger and better. Also, I wanted to congratulate the students that are going to be coming back to school, the principals and the staff. There are a lot of back-to-school, I understand, opportunities for those backpacks and other items. So I know the website has some at the city. So take advantage of that. It is also August is National Immunization Month. So believe it or not, they say COVID is rising again. So make sure everybody gets their current immunizations. August is also, August 21st is National Senior Citizens Day. So those of us that fit in that category, probably no one here. You have a chance to celebrate. Who knows? Some of the local businesses may have a senior citizen treat for you. And then finally, August 26th is Women's Equality Day. I hope I live to see that, but thank you. Have a great rest of the summer. Thank you so much.
All right, very good. Commissioner Rice?
Congratulations to Faith and Ryan on your promotions. Well deserved. No further comments.
Commissioner Trejo?
It's really been fun watching the growth of the very young staff that you have. Mr. McCrumby, I was going to say Bernard, but I'm being formal, Mr. McCrumby. Well deserved, Faith, Brian. But it's been, again, my having been on the Commission forever, having watched the growth of the planning, of the planning department staff, and particularly in the last few years, you've had a turnover and they're all, you know, young, not seasoned like the Commissioners. But, and they've done a great job. So it's well-deserved promotions and congratulations. Beyond that, do you have any information on my project? Well, not my project, but the spot that I've been asking about? I know I wasn't here last month when you probably had an answer as to what's going on at...
Yes, yes, we did. Actually, I sent an email, kind of, that responded to all of the bevy of questions.
I did see that, thank you.
But, you know, the car rental, the previous tire shop is now being finalized as a car rental facility.
Who parked their car on the sidewalk, I saw today.
Uh-oh.
A couple cars on the sidewalk.
All right, we'll get code enforcement to take a look at that. And to date, we have not received any formal applications for the service station. But we are, they do have an active code enforcement case. And we are diligently making sure that they're keeping that site clean. And so we regularly check in with code enforcement, who is no longer on our floor. There have been some departmental changes. And so code enforcement now is a part of the housing division or department. And so, but we're still in constant communication. There is an arm that is continuing to ensure code compliance throughout the city. And so we'll make sure that we stay in constant communication that that site is cleaned up.
Great. Yeah, they've been doing a good job of keeping it clean. And I know they've dug up quite a bit. I'm just curious as to what's going to go in there.
Yeah, we haven't received any formal applications. I know that, you know, it is possible that through the state, they could be doing some remediation of some underground tanks and things like that. But that wouldn't come through the planning division.
And then, again, just on that, on the car rental place, just let them know that we don't want them to start off on the wrong foot and park... They do have a lot of cars there, but there were like two cars on the sidewalk that I saw today, so...
Okay, yeah, we've been talking with them quite frequently. Look, my staff is back there laughing because we've had some meetings. So we'll make sure that we talk to them tomorrow about that.
And that somebody is always mentioning them, that drives by there quite often. They can't get away with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
I do have a question. What's going on with the car wash on Imperial and Limoli? It's been closed for quite a while. Are they permanently closed?
We'll look into that. I know we did approve an upgrade some time ago. And so we'll follow up with the property owner to see what the status is on their development.
And congratulations to Faith and Ryan on your promotions. If any monarchs are out there listening, don't forget, we're having our annual Luminal picnic at Ed Vincent Park on the 16th of August. And it starts at 11:00 a.m. Oh, and our meet and greet is Friday, the 15th, at Addis, which is right next to the Nile. That's at 7:00 p.m. That's it.
What's the name of your school again?
Hornet's side. Thank you, thank you.
What is a monarch? What is that?
A lion.
No, it's a lion. Yeah, there are monarchs.
Monarch? She never knew that. How come it just couldn't be a lion? Congratulations to you both on your promotion. Don't forget lunch. Just kidding. I wanted to ask Mr. Bernard about the Planning Commissioners Academy. That's one of the things that I wanted to find out. Is it still on? I want to thank you for the t-shirt that we have. I think you, my size wasn't the right size. But I got an extra-large. I should have got a double X.
Well, we'll make sure we get you a double X then.
But thank you anyway. Appreciate it. I liked the color.
Liked the colorway?
Yeah.
That's awesome. All right, well...
Didn't Inglewood, the color at Eastern... I'm sorry. It was green before.
Okay, so...
That's because he missed you.
She made me forget what I was going to say. The Commissioners Academy, so we can put it in our calendar, or we're going to be getting some information on that. It's coming up real soon. Can you give me the city?
So we're going to the California APA Conference. You all are all registered. It's going to be in Monterey. And it's September 28th through October 1st. And we'll make sure that we send out calendar reminders by the end of this week to, so that you guys can make sure that you block out that time. We're finalizing just the flights. And so we'll be sending out further details as they come within the next couple of weeks. But we are going. Registration has been taken care of. Rooms are taken care of. And we'll be having a great time representing the city of Inglewood with our next-level swag that you guys have. So that makes packing...
Have to remind us what to bring.
That makes packing easy.
Yes, we're wearing our t-shirts.
Right.
Can we get some polos?
You got one.
Okay, I do have one.
You do have a polo.
I can't wear it every day.
But you know, you're right. We'll work on that.
Okay.
We're going to be there four or five days with four or five t-shirts.
I mean, I'm just...
White one, a blue one, no. There's nothing else. I've been, I wanted to make sure that my Commissioners were going to be there because it's going to be a good event. I think the last time we had gone to one, I think we went to Philadelphia. And that was fantastic. It was off the chain. So I want to make sure all the Commissioners are going to be going. I know that Shaw Williams got to get, she got to get a hall pass to go.